Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm Chair of the DCHA. DCHA Stabilization and the Forum Board, and I'd like to all this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the DCHA. Being held today, July the ninth. Twenty twenty-five and the time, the time is now one P M. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing and the board is here in person in the boardroom. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to allow for some personal reflection. Thank you. So today's meeting is is a regular meeting of the board and we've invited members of the public to sign up to speak. Through our website where those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes public input on matters of concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views. In the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct, loud threatening or abusive language during the board meeting. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from this virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in being barred from speaking at future board meetings. But we do appreciate your interest in the business before us today, and I want to thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I would ask for a roll call vote to determine if we have a quorum.
Do it. Denise Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. Rosa Burbidge. Rosa Burbidge. Commissioner, I see you on the screen. Star six to unmute yourself. Going to move forward. Leroy Clay.
Present.
Thank you. Jim Dickerson.
Here.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris.
Present.
Thank you. Katrina Jones. Chris Murphy.
Present.
Thank you. Jennifer Reed. Teresa Silla.
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Raymond Skinner.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like the Commissioners to consider the minutes of the June eleventh, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
If none, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
A second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Let the minutes stand approved as presented. Okay, next, we're going to move on to our Executive Director's Report. Mr. Keith Pettigrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. Property management noticed in the summary, it ticked down one percent. This is some of the things that have been identified since Carolyn has taken over. With regard to why that one percent declined, obviously, as we said at the last.
Sorry, what kicked down one percent?
Uh utilization. I talk about so much magic.
To remember that the public does know.
I'm sorry, forgive me, public. But obviously, we're we're. Fortune ahead, we're preparing to go over the waitlist. In late September, early October, so we'll be sharing information with the subcommittees as we go along, riding up to that point particularly. What will look like the whole marketing aspect of it, the whole outreach of it, so. I don't want people to be worried. We are going to do a lot of outreach to a lot of organizations and and other training sessions on how to work. As we go forward, so just to be prepared and look forward to more information coming if we move forward before we before we announce the waitlist open.
Doctor, can I add occupancy? Because obviously, it's troubling to see it go down. I I assume every time I ask this, the answer I often get is because we're offering units and people aren't taking them.
Yes.
And I guess as we think about as a question here, as we think about opening up to the site base list, are the rules going to change? So few people will get fewer bites of the apple? Because I it just it it troubles me that I I want to respect choice. But when we respect it so much that it means we have hundreds of units sitting there that could be filled by other people lower on the list, it pains me. And I just wonder, are we thinking about changing that policy a little bit when we go to site base?
Yes, we will. We will shorten the period. We have to comply with, I think it's two two offers. But obviously, I guess we will be more generous because of circumstances we're wearing already, and I didn't want to change it.
Yeah.
But once we do the site based waitlist, the good thing about site bases, number one. They're picking a site for a reason, so that's going to really help.
That's a head start.
Yeah, yeah, so. Probably not going to see a whole lot of declines because, you know, they they pick those sites for a reason because they want to be there as opposed to now offering places that nobody wants to go like Woodland.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, right now.
So isn't isn't another part of the issue the the studio, the zero bedroom?
Yep.
You can't get people to take this zero bedroom.
Yeah, but remember now, if they pick that site, you know, they're probably picking it because they want a studio. So the site base covers that both where you want to live and also the bare size you're looking for. So it would be that detail, so.
I want us, I want to also encourage us to think about like how we work with homeless services because lots of single adults do not have access to affordable housing. And so if there's a way that we can partner around that. You know, we have a lot of liaisons that can help funnel people to those opportunities. So as we're working on the waitlist, if we can think through a homeless preference or some way to support the referral process, we're ready. On our end.
Hey, I may have an idea for you, but we need to do the breakfast. While we're thinking about it, on on the voucher side. The new continues to ride utilization continues to rise. We're at ninety-six percent now, which is wonderful. We do really good on that side of the house right now.
Can I ask a question about? And maybe maybe this is if you want to say wait till we get to the MTW conversation, that's fine, but. Obviously, you know, one of my anxieties is that we just have all the vouchers on the street. We have nine hundred and thirty-three of L R S D vouchers. It seems like some of the initiatives in the MTW conversation are aimed at addressing. And sort of getting at some of the root causes for that delay. Is that correct? And do you want to wait until MTW?
For the delay of the lease ups?
The delay of the lease ups, yeah.
I'll let Nicole cover some of that, but what I will say is this particularly on the local side, you know, we're working with DHS and advocates and we're going to be meeting next week. To talk about, look at that whole process from from beginning to end. So hopefully, we'll come out of that that room in two days with a solution to speed it up.
Because what I notice is that we are issuing new vouchers, which is great. But we're not filling them fast enough to even keep the number on the street steady. So that number over the last couple of months seems to be climbing. So it's like. We're putting more in more sand in the top than can make out the bottom, which means it's rising.
No, we're reducing.
We were reducing, yes, but we're also adding even more families eligible.
Well, right, you know, I mean, I looked at, we did a hundred and eighty-eight vouchers issued in May, but the number of vouchers searching went up eighty-three. So. So we did, we were reducing, we were below nine hundred and now we're above nine hundred again, which is where we haven't been in some time.
The number rises naturally because we are even more families eligible, more applications are being received on the local side.
Right, but that. So you're saying in the last couple of months, that wasn't the case because we were doing fewer issuances?
Yes. Part of it.
Okay.
Well, just also to add, we had some families that, you know, brought paperwork in or paperwork may have gotten missed, so we allowed them to come back. So that's why you see that rise in in the numbers over the last month or so.
Is that, I'm going to put you on the spot, is that something you would expect will start to go down again?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Can I take a moment to express appreciation for what's about to happen next week? The facilitator that you've selected, although I wasn't able to join the initial engagement, all of the feedback that I've gotten, her energy, the. Her approach and what she sees as a possibility for us. Has been very exciting and invigorating to folks on the ground.
Can you explain what you're talking about and for the public?
Yes, of course. My apologies. This is an effort to expedite Lisa in partnership with DHS, D C Housing Authority, and also. The Interagency Council on Homelessness. And so this should be supporting the families that exited F R S P and that we are accommodating on H C B fee. But also all of the local vouchers, the L R S P vouchers and that process. So just expressing early appreciation and gratitude for. D C Housing Authority coming to the table, bringing and offering the facilitator as well.
I'm looking forward to it too, that one resolved this.
All of us, yes.
I can give trouble of my own. Okay. So any more questions, Commissioner Murphy?
Those are, those were my two, so thank you.
Um. Obviously, my summary touches on some resident services activities as well as. The curmats, et cetera, but I guess I shouldn't bury the lead, right? The big news that we have is that the city council approved our bond requests.
Hey, yeah. Huge.
So we're extremely excited, but I think a lot of people are excited, extremely grateful to the board, first of all, for supporting this initiative and this activity. As well as the mayor's office and city council and D P as well, so. The RFP is out, talked about, so it's we called it at the end of the month.
This is the but already to select developers.
We've been on on renovating these properties. Yes, so we're moving forward. We'll be giving you updates with our schedule and everything else as we. Moving to the subcommittees. What the latter part of the month, so we'll give you more updates on where we are and show you guys a schedule and a timeline so you'll know how, what, when, where, and how we're going to be moving forward, so we're excited.
So I know you're on a pretty fast track, so you anticipate that construction will be underway by the end of the year?
No, no, I ain't that fast.
I thought you were on a really fast track.
No, probably the first quarter of next year.
First quarter.
We put me on the spot, man. Thanks to Nicole.
I was already right, first quarter.
I know, right? But but no, but this is a good thing. It's going to allow us to address a lot of issues immediately. And given the change in market, the bond situation was a was a good way to go. The team who sat there and brainstormed about it beforehand, and I'm just excited for the team. I appreciate the team because we pull this off. Okay. We see anything else? Touch on DHS, touch on the waitlist, touch on the RFP. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, any of the Commissioners? Virtual, any questions, Commissioner Harris? I see Commissioner Blackson, okay. Okay, well, thank you, Executive Director. Things are continuing to to improve, and so we really appreciate the work of you and your team. Moving us along. Okay, at this time, we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is public testimony. So we're going to have resident testimony first, and again, just a reminder. Part of your testimony, you can bring up any issues you would like, and you have three minutes to complete your testimony.
So we're going to start with Paulette Matthews. Paulette Matthews, and I'm going to give a little time because I know there's a little bit of a delay. And star six to unmute yourself.
Hello? Hello, hello, hello?
Hi, Ms. Matthews.
Hi, y'all finally can hear me. Okay, thanks, great, excellent. Okay. Well, I first want to say hello to everybody in the rooms on Zoom or wherever. Um, I am just thankful to be on the call today and to be able to see all the changes that are coming forth. Um, so I want to do a shout out for DCHA, and I hope that the board members will. Give them the opportunity to make the things that are happening continue to happen. I know that everywhere seem like funds are being cut here, there, and we got to fight for them and do all these different things. But I hope that that too will change because, you know, these things are needed, housing is needed to be able to eat and all these different things. And I know that in time, things are going to change around, so right now I feel kind of good about the things that are going on because I also know same time, whole time, that there's a process with all of this that's going on. So I have not been to Berry Farms in a minute. But as you all know, and if you don't know, I was, I used to live in Berry Farms. And so that is a concern of mine, even though I'm not there, and I really like to hear more updates and things in reference to Berry Farms and what's taking place there. Also with the historical buildings, because the whole time we wanted the whole area to be deemed as historical because it is. But what we got was those buildings, and so I want to know what's going on with the buildings and what are the future plans for these buildings? And on this end where I now live, everything is going pretty good, so thanks to all the DCHA staff that is working all of us together to make things happen. So Berry Farms is what I'd like to hear more discussion about whenever y'all have meetings, that I don't have to keep continuously saying something about Berry Farms. To hear the updates of Berry Farms, please, and thank you, and I'm done.
Okay, so I mean, this is really critically important, so I'm going to ask Keith or or maybe Sheila to just give a really brief update on Berry Farms and what the plans are going forward.
Sure, but for the record, I'm Sheila Miller, Director of O C P. We're going to talk about one of the third phase of the Berry Farm Development Rental Plats a little later in the in the meeting, but. We are progressing forward, Ms. Matthews, as you as you may be aware, we just finished the Asbury. Edmondson's currently under construction. We have the third building that will be coming online in another two years. The overall plan is to complete the entire development by twenty thirty. But we're trying our best to expedite that, but funding is is part of the the challenge there, but we're fortunately, we have good partners with the district that are helping us to move the project along. So things are progressing. Again, we're we're going to talk about the third building to to be constructed on the Berry Farm site. And I know that the third building, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, is one that most residents are excited about because of the bedroom mix there. And so I know that that is one of the Matthews is pretty.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Rochelle Roscoe.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, good afternoon. Well, I guess some of my concerns were it's not. Really related to what you all are talking about, but it is related to. The housing specialist that we had, well, that I have, and how it took. A almost a year for her to get back in touch with me due to some. Issues that I was having with my landlord, and one of them were. Not knowing who my specialists were at the time when I was into into the building. And then with the rent increase meant that I had no recognition of, and then they were saying that I owed a tremendous amount of back pay. When I told them that was not true and I had receipts for everything. And the other issue was about when you, when we get into these places, how the landlords always try to go up on our rent and not let housing know. And then they try to say that we owe this X, Y, Z amount of money, which is not true. Hello?
Are you, are you, are you done?
Yes, oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's those were my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Norman Probst.
Could you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, my name is Norman Probst. And I live at Brookfield Property. At in the Navy Yard, and we form up a tenants group. Over eight hundred apartments in my building, I live in Gil's apartment. Fifteen percent of low incomes in there, and we are being charged hitting fees, common area fees outside our apartments. And the fees are keep going up, and I've been paying double. On trash fee, which my lease say nine dollars. Then I'm paying double rental insurance. I'm paying their rental insurance and my rental insurance, and. It's like no help here. I came up to. The Housing Authority to speak to my housing specialist, speak to a supervisor. I was turning around and said, could nobody help me? Because that's a tenant and a landlord issue. So it's like we stuck here paying all these hitting fees and common area. Common electricity fees, I'm paying for something on top of the roof. I don't even have gas in my apartment. So I hit a file, a class lawsuit, so somebody could hear our voices. The news people down here, they said they've been overcharging us, the leasing manager. So it's like no help here for us. We have elderly people live in Brookfield Properties here, and they calling up for help. So it's like no help for us, so we still waiting for the class lawsuit in the Superior Court. To ju, you know, the judge to like, you know, if we could contend to. Our lawsuit, and I'm a disabled person here. I feel like that I don't have no help. I've been calling everywhere to get help, even for some of the tenants here who are disabled.
Okay, Mr. Ross, what I can do is just have one of the one of the staff.
Yeah, my question is, are you guys going to do something about the hitting fees? You know, and the common area fees, because some of the tenants are paying, and some of them not, depends what kind of housing voucher you put on. Like tax credit, DCHA housing, I've been on to the Choice Housing Voucher. I feel like that discriminate against pick and choose whoever pay hitting fees, whoever pay. Common electricity in apartments be on the sale.
Okay, so again.
That's all, yeah, and thank you guys for allowing me to talk and speak.
Okay, I'll have someone follow up with you and so we can get all the information and no help. Thank you.
Next, we have. Trivita Chance. Trivita Chance. Star six to unmute if you're on, if you called in. Next, we have Kenneth Council. Kenneth Council. Star six to unmute.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
We're done now.
Good afternoon. In the press, I noticed the press release last week about the seven hundred million dollars. But I'm wondering the scope of work that will be discussed with the residents this month. Why is it being done afterwards? All the paperwork have been signed. I'm trying to figure that out. It's already been signed on a dotted line, but the press release also said that there's an I R B revitalization project of innovative. I guess you all think that we don't realize it, but residents do have a say. And being creative, it means creative or original. A simple Google search just shown me before I came on. That it was introduced in the Alexandria Housing Authority by Director Pettigrew, and the developer was David Corleala. At the Alexander Housing Authority, looking at the timeline, it looks like that Director Pettigrew left the innovative still running when he joined DCHA. I'm curious about the status of Alexandria. It looks like the gift keeps giving to the developer and the investors. My question is. Is David Corleala a DCHA employee or is he a developer? I'm curious why as well. Their court penalized developer is so entangled. Why is he so entangled in DCHA financials? Was HUD notified about Mr. Corleala, his past indictment in Mass in Massachusetts? Why is he allowed to be so close with DCHA's financial decisions, and who are the other developers on this project? There's supposed to be a bid which I've never seen in the newspaper with the developers, developers to be going, is this going to happen? Or who will oversee the project other than Mr. Corleala? If you don't see that it's conflict of interest, we all are in trouble. This type of thing keeps happening, and I don't understand. There's a lot of things that's happening on these properties where I don't see the names. I don't see who who's over the contractors, they're coming in, they're doing things, they're leaving out. And there's nobody that's coming behind them correcting to make sure that their work is properly done. Last August, Nicole told us, meaning the block by block leadership. She told us that they were doing a demo eighteen. On every property, but it would come back to us and have a discussion. That discussion has not happened yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council. For the record, Mr. Corleala is neither a D DCHA employee or a developer. And there is an RFP on the street now to hire development partners to work with the Housing Authority and the residents. On the scope of services for the rebuilding of of our properties. So thank you, Mr. Council.
Yeah, I just want one question. He is an employee.
He is a contract.
A contractor employee, sorry, yeah.
But a contract employee. Or something like that, a contract. The other thing I just want to clarify, and and I maybe I can ask everybody with a question. The properties that we have talked about developing, we have, we have now consulted with the residents at those properties. Is that correct?
On the.
On the first wave.
Of course not, yeah, we start to talk to resident leaders.
Yes.
So and we're going to start meetings next week.
So to suggest that they don't know that would be incorrect.
Right.
Yeah.
We're going, like I said, we started the the resident meeting next week.
So who at the properties is aware that they're in the first knot?
The resident leaders, I called all the.
The resident leaders, okay, all right, so leadership of those properties is aware to suggest that they are not aware would be false.
And and just to add, section eighteen you have to apply for, so if at a meeting I said all of them are going section eighteen, that's not correct because every property would not qualify. So you have to put in an application for section eighteen, so the repositioning tools may be section eighteen or rad in a blend. So it really depends upon the strategy that we take and what HUD accepts. Just to clarify for the section eighteen.
Next, we have Shanta High. Shanta High. And star six. I'm going to move forward. Next, we have Davion Vick. Star six to unmute, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, you can hear me. I'm I'm calling in to. I guess. Talk to you guys or get some understanding of the process. When you're moving into a new building under N C I. New Community Initiative. So I I moved into the new building. So I, I moved into the new building, um, Park Morton. And the process for six months since February was horrible. When I say horrible, I'm not gonna fully go into details. I will email um, Director Pettigrew just sharing the experiences in hoping that in the future that things are different for residents that are going, because you have so many different um, teams coming together to try to make one thing work. It does not work. It was horrible. It was chaotic. I will say this, had it not been for individual at housing, which I was very surprised at. Um, that kept me informed about myself and what was going on. And I mean, he was like good. Okay, which uh, kind of calmed my spirits because it was stressful. Very, very stressful up until the day I moved there. So as I stated, I would, I'm gonna do an email to you guys just to kind of give you some of my experiences, okay? And hoping that it can help for the next project or the projects that you're on. It can help um, where the residents are not left in the dark scrambling, uh, stressed out and doesn't know what to do and nobody's communicating with them. Nobody. So that was it. And thank you for listening.
And thank you, Ms. Vic. And uh, we look forward to getting your, your email with your experiences.
Okay, thank you so much for your response to.
So that concludes our resident section of the testimony. Next we have our non-resident. First, I'm calling Heaven Gabriela, Gabri La Liasi. I believe I'm saying that correctly. And star six to yourself.
Hello?
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 I can hear you. You can begin your test.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Heaven Saha and uh, as I told you, I'm a disabled person. I have a cramp disease and an osteomy bag. Hello?
I can hear you.
I just wanna, I'm sorry. I just wanna ask how the process will be because like as we know, the wait list is closed. And then I'm like disabled. I have osteomy bag. I can't do that much work. And then I'm gonna do an extra journey. Like I have a cramp disease. It's a lifetime. So I just wanna ask how will be the section eight process will be going, the wait, waiting list? How it's gonna be gone? Cause we don't know what's like, what will be the process, waiting list? So I just wanna ask that and then how will be provided? Cause like, as I told you, I'm living with my family and I stay in the couch and I have osteomy bag. I'm gonna do next surgery. I'm too young, so that's why I was applying to the section eight because I can't work. If I work, I like, I uh, I will be tired and like the, this, this like suggests me my primary care doctor. So I just wanna ask how the process going, how you provide me on them. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have somebody call you to follow up.
Next we have Nathaniel Henry. Nathaniel Henry. I'm gonna move forward. Next we have Daniel Del Peniego.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Daniel Del Piago. I work with Empower DC. We work with public housing residents around the city. I've got um, a couple of things I'd like to just to make some suggestions. Um, I know there's a lot of good things happening at D C H A and there's still a lot of concerns. A- as I've been looking at, you know, right now, the housing committee is probably finalizing the rental act. I know you all will be voting on the moving to work um, the plan today. And then there's also the A C O P that is still out there that has not been finalized. So th- there's quite a bit happening and a- at least as a person who, who at least says they try to follow all of this, I'm still confused around how all of this works together, especially in the context of the um, redevelopments that still need to happen and what people's rights will be uh, around those uh, with the uh, renovation project that's coming up, the nineteen properties. Uh, realizing that they're starting with nine. Um, I, I'm just concerned that there's all these kind of disparate parts, but that I know all are, are all attached. And I think residents are owed a clearer explanation of how all this is working together. Uh, for example, I see that Lincoln Heights is a part of the first nine uh, properties. They were a new communities initiative uh, property. Um, but Lincoln, but um, Richardson dwellings isn't in this number. Um, and I don't know if anything has been communicated to that property. So a- about what's happening or not happening in their case. Um, I would urge this uh, housing authority, uh, once again, you know, we're, we're all for repairs and I think we can get behind that a- a- and hopefully it's a benefit for residents. But I think let's not fall into the miscommunication or lack of communication that has ailed this um, housing authority for a very long time where residents just aren't clear on what's happening. So I would encourage you all to um, you know, not only communicate to these nine properties uh, a- about what's to happen, um, but to your portfolio at large, uh, just a, uh, even if it's a summary of what the, you know, what, what this agency is prioritizing. What will happen, what won't happen, what is still, you know, waiting. Um, as we heard, there's not enough money for some projects that are actively happening like Berry Farm uh, to finalize them. Um, so just a, 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 as we talk to residents, this is what we hear, the, the confusion of what um, they were told from prior administrations and what's happening now and, and there's a big change. So um, encouraging this housing authority um, to, to communicate clear. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, uh, Daniel. That's uh, clearly an, an important point. And uh, as the director indicated uh, earlier, we're gonna be stepping ups and having uh, one-on-one meetings at each of the properties uh, to talk about the, the upcoming renovations and uh, in that context, uh, I would uh, urge the, the staff to also uh, try to incorporate as much as you can in terms of the big picture of everything that's going on with, with the uh, housing authority. Because there is a lot.
There is a lot, absolutely. They put together a table.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be um, appropriate here as well. Thank you. Um, one of the discussions that we had in uh, the committee on operations was the fact that we are making a lot of different investments. It's not just the bond. Uh, but there are other vehicles of investments. And so um, a cheat sheet or a, a table that outlines the investments by property might actually be super helpful, a matrix. And it looks like um, uh, those, that feedback was appreciated and has been uh, uh, acted on. So um, I, you know, I'm happy to hear that we are moving in a direction to provide the kind of clarity and transparency around the investments that are being made property by property. So thank you for that feedback and also for the follow-up actions on the part of the executive team. I would, I just did a, thank you, ditto to both of your comments. Um, I think, I believe that in the fall, um, the staff is gonna be asking us to authorize the first tranche uh, to, to go in and uh, secure the first tranche of the bond funding. And I think the plan, and if it's not, maybe it could be the plan to sort of use that moment to do a presentation to the board and the public about how we've, what the first nine properties are, which were mentioned in the press release, but we, we could explain a little, a little bit more to tell how we got to that list, because I know there was quite a bit of thoughtful um, consideration given to what the first property should be and how, and it might, I, I'm realizing that like we've had conversations in our committee that we haven't had publicly. And it might be helpful to do that presentation for a board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Take yourself.
Next we have William Jordan. William Jordan, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
You can hear me now? Good afternoon. Um, but make it brief, uh, first around Park Morton. Uh, I think you all need to audit that project. I would say that the lease up and management of that project was Keystone Cops. Uh, and given the amount of time that we had to prepare and make sure everything was smooth. And we just, it was just a fiasco. Right? And if it was up to me, I would fire everybody in the chain of command on that project. Uh, T C B has definitely got to go. They should not be the property manager for that project moving forward. Um, I don't know what the um, director of the um, Sheila Miller was doing, but she was asleep at the switch and that has to be dealt with. I think this project should have been an example of how you do it. And it turned out to be an example of how not to do a new communities project. Second, dealing with the move to work. Under move to work is the self-sufficiency program. The self-sufficiency program really would dovetail greatly with the human capital program and a program or development like Park Morton. But the two were never merged, although we asked over and over and over again that the two programs work together to ensure that human capital benefits of the project at Park Morton became a perfect example of how you do human capital. And ensure that the residents improve their condition. Again, I've warned you all about this widgetization of residents. We build houses and plug people in like they're widgets. That is not what we signed up for. That's not what new communities was about. It was about giving resident life-changing opportunities. And that's not what we got. You are allowed it to be broken. We've tried over and over again to work with the board, work with the staff to assure that this didn't happen. And this is like Colin Powell in Iraq. You broke it, you own it, and you need to take responsibility for the harm that was done. Finally, so back to move to work, it needs to be an option added that is tailored to new communities, human capital. So you have these different, I think there's five categories. You need a six. And it needs to be designed for these types of programs and you all need to get it done. And you need to make it happen because you own it now. It's broken. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Your non-resident testimony for today.
But I'd like to thank all of those who have presented testimony today. Um, you know, it's important for us as a board uh, and the staff uh, to hear from the public and uh, understand what some of your issues and concerns are. So thank you again. Okay, we're gonna next move on to our um, committee reports and resolutions. And I'm first gonna call on Commissioner Murphy, who chairs the Capital Projects Committee for the board.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think um, we have a one motion to bring to the board's attention today um, regarding Berry Farm Flats. Um, this is, uh, as we've talked a fair amount about Berry Farm today, which is great. Um, this, there are multiple phases, as folks know, to this pretty significant redevelopment. Um, we are, remain in the first phase. The good thing about today's news is we're here to talk about the third building in the first phase. So just to give it some context. So let me turn it over to Sheila who can present uh, about where we are in this process and then she can speak to the resolution that we'll consider today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, again, Sheila Miller. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, thank you for, for taking, taking it up. Uh, Berry Farm Rental Flats uh, represents the third uh, building, third development in the overall Berry Farm um, phase. So this is part of phase one. There will be things, two rental flats um, in the, in a few years out. But um, right now, this will be the third uh, building, which will hopefully commence construction. We hope to close on this transaction by the end of the year. And we'll follow with construction commencement and it will take two years to come online. Um, so I'm here before the day uh, to ask for um, authorization for the E D to submit to HUD a disposition application for the Berry Farm Rental Flats. And that's basically just taking the parcels of land that will be used for the rental flats and disposing it, moving it over to the ownership entity um, for development. Um, thanks. We're also asking for authorization to move forward with closing um, of the transaction. Again, the transaction is scheduled to close the October of this year. Um, we're on track. We have, we've gone through H F A initial inducement. Um, and then we'll go to final inducement in September and proceed with closing from there. Um, let's talk about rental flats for a second. So rental flats and, and there's a lot of excitement about rental flats as we heard Ms. Matthews testify. And is always asking about when is mental flats coming online? Um, it'll be comprised of ninety units. Um, of which more than half, over half, will be comprised of three, four, and five bedroom units. Which is, which is a bit unusual um, in this mar- in this market where you typically see studios, one bedrooms and some twos. Um, so it will be contained in nine buildings. Um, and again, they'll be uh, stackable walk-up flats. Um, at ninety of which uh, forty-two of the ninety will service replacement units for the returning residents. Relocated residents. Um, let's talk about the development cost for a second. There's been a lot of discussion about the cost to build uh, uh, affordable projects, in particular with Berry Farm, the rental flats uh, project. The development cost per unit is pretty high. So it's over a million dollars per unit. So um, thank you, Commissioner Sheila, for asking us to, you know, start to present deals in terms of, our deals in terms of uh, uh, development cost per unit. Um, so that, that forces us to take a look at it and do further analysis based on um, a subsequent meeting on what's driving the cost. Why is the development cost for Berry Farm Rental Flats higher, so high? And so we did some analysis. We've reached out to our counterparts of our agency partners to get some comps. And we also looked at some comps of properties that we have currently in our portfolio under development. And what we found is that in short, the Berry Farm Rental Flats is pretty much in line with where we are, uh, where the market is today. Um, I'll just, because not, I don't want to get too much into the weeds into the numbers here, but if there are questions, happy to answer them. If we look at the total development cost today compared to where we were in twenty-one, right? Total cost, total development cost increased by fifty-three percent. Of that hard cost increased by forty-five percent. If we look at twenty-one, uh, years twenty-one, fast forward. Of that hard cost increased by forty-five percent. If we look at twenty-one, uh years twenty-one, fast forward to to twenty-two um total development cost increased forty-five percent. Um and hard of that hard cost increased thirty-two percent. Fast forward to where we are in twenty-four um compared to uh to where we are today. Total development cost increased by six percent. So and then hard cost increased by one percent. So we're pretty much in line with where the market is in terms of 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 cost increases over over a four or five year period. Um and I say five year period because particularly with the twenty-one developers had to go back and receive the bids in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. So it's so a lot of that is kind of baked in. So where we are today is pretty much where where the market is and that's if you um in in the presentation, you'll see that, you know, most of the hard uh total development cost is driven by the hard cost. Now, what makes this one a little bit more unique as well in terms of why it's so hard is the type of structure it is. So we we just described it's nine buildings, stackable walk up uh units and again, larger bedroom units. So we have a huge composition of three, four and five bedroom units, which adds to the cost. So I'll just pause there and see if there are any questions.
And maybe we could just say a word from the sort of the committee's perspective. So um really, I also want to just echo the Commissioner Silla is the one who really prompted us to be really focused on this and so we as a committee have made a a commitment that we're this is something we're gonna be looking at going forward on all our projects. So I think that's helpful. I think the other thing and I just pick up on a couple of themes you said.
Yeah.
We wanna be um, we don't wanna just look at a number and and without context, that context matters. And um there there are a couple of unique things about this this where we are now with this particular project. One is just we are seeing cost increases over the last couple of years and that is just a fact of life. It is increasing everywhere um with every kind of project, whether it's DCHA or not. So number one, costs are going up and we we need to be aware of that. Secondly, we also know, um we've talked a lot about sustainability. These are important parts of our project, important components of our project. Um but they don't happen for nothing. They cost money. And um a lot of these are because the city has uh decided from a policy perspective that they want projects like these to include those sustainability elements. That is completely fine by us, but we we wanna be transparent with the city and everyone else that that drives up costs. And then the last thing is this this w- w- we have about the 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 number of bedrooms is that we are building in some cases many more units that are larger than a typical market unit would uh would have more bedrooms than a typical unit. Why? Because that's what our residents are telling us they want. And so we're trying to be responsive to residents. When we build a three or even a four bedroom unit in in a market rate building, that could be a two bedroom unit, right? So we're we're getting one unit for where at a market rate would be two units. Which means when you start doing, you divide it out by the the per unit cost, you're gonna have fewer units to divide by. So there are th- those are some of the contexts that are important to consider when we think about this. Overall, we wanna keep our cost per unit as low as we reasonably can, but there are other factors that come into play and several of those factors drive up the cost. And so we just wanna be open and transparent about sort of how we're trying to manage all these different variables. So that was I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um I you know, um uh thank you so much for um you know, taking the feedback into account and uh coming, you know, forward and helping us highlight um that about this particular project and how it compares across all the projects. I um I wanna make sure um because William Jordan, I think, has been uh heavy on my mind. He wasn't at our last month's meeting, but I think the month before that, um he really articulated that somehow our conversations are not communicating that residents are really at the heart of what we are doing. So thank you for uplifting that. Um you know, in this case, we are being driven by the demand for the larger units that we know our residents want and need. So I definitely wanna make sure that he is hearing how we are centering residents um and that we are not always uh focused in on the dollars, the cents and the numbers but that we are trying to be as human centered, as residence centered as we can in our deliberations and our decision making. Um so I wanted to speak to um his critique and like let him know we are listening, we are um acting in that accord and if we have not communicated communicated that effectively previously, um you know, just making sure that we are centering that in our communications as we move forward. So just wanted to reflect that back to um he's such a dedicated um attendee uh and uh really a a you know, at least for me, somebody who uh whose feedback weighs heavy and so just wanted to um make sure he realizes we're listening.
Well, I don't think we're only listening. I think we're uh but no one, everybody, you know, I developed affordable housing. I've been doing it for sixty years here and I nobody uh is escaping these costs and they're gonna keep going up. If you realize that the uh president is putting tariffs on everything now, so it's it's a it's it's a different environment that we're in and we just have fine ways to do this. The problem too is there's a lot of different costs that are loaded up in a per unit, what it costs to develop one unit of housing. So a lot of it is not directly related to the construction of the unit. There's all these regulations and all these larger, so there's gonna need to be some work to sort out some of the things that are more general that go for regulations and what we're required to do and what it actually costs to do that unit. So I mean, that's that's going. The other thing I wanna again uh uh give the staff a lot of credit and Ms. Miller a lot of credit for all the work that she does and that you do. I know it's a very tough job and you didn't back away from it. You aren't backing away from it. And I know we get there's plenty of room to criticize a whole lot, there's plenty of room to, you know, nothing's perfect. But people are really dedicated and they are working hard at this. And uh we need to kind of pull together uh as much as possible here and I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you.
So uh yeah, I don't I think when you have a have an article that comes out and they just come out with one big number and that whole thing of the cost of the unit. I I mean, I go back to when the unit cost less than fifty dollars a square foot. That was before. Even that was high in those days, okay? But that is no longer the case. And uh so I just wanna say uh you're doing a great job and uh there's nothing perfect, but keep it up and uh we're gonna keep trying, all of us. And uh I I'm I'm very, I wanna I wanna make sure you hear that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick Dickerson. Uh do any of the commissioners who are online have any questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen which is to authorize the execution and submission of documents to HUD to dispose of land for the uh third building at the Berry Farms project.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenny Reed, was she able to do? I'm gonna move forward. Commissioner Chris Murphy.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Denise Blackson.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Raymond Skinner.
Yes.
Resolution's approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Murphy, anything anything else for your committee?
I think that's it for now.
That's it, okay. Uh then I'm gonna call on I guess Miss Silla, Operations Commissioner Jones is not here today. Uh right chair of Operations.
Um I think, are we introducing the resolution now? Okay, so I
Let's go ahead.
Okay, so I think maybe it's best for uh Nefolbe to give the presentation. I do want to recognize the effort that she has put into um uh helping um especially me, understand uh what was in the move to work plan. Um she did several presentations. We walked through it uh at least two times. Her presentations back to you know, cover to cover with lots of questions and concerns, um but she's been very diligent in making sure um to be available to answer to them. Some pieces are complicated because this is how HUD wants the plan and this is about the language that HUD is looking for in the plan. It is not very uh necessarily board or resident friendly.
Friendly, right?
Yes.
The language.
The language.
Not the policy.
Not the policy, yeah, exactly. Not the policy, but the language can be hard to navigate and and that's why we went back and forth a couple of times to really understand uh what was included in the plan. Thank you.
So again, just for for benefit of the public, uh this presentation is regarding the the FY twenty twenty-six uh move to work plan.
Um thank you, Commissioners for having me and and um uh I'm going to be talking about the FY twenty-six MTW plan and changes that we are proposing uh for the upcoming fiscal year. Um next slide, please. Um so we are proposing making uh we are proposing three new MTW initiatives uh for the FY twenty-six plan. Uh we are also proposing changes to three of our existing initiatives and I'll talk about those um in the next couple of slides. For the proposed new initiatives, uh the first initiative that we are proposing that's new is the voucher success fund. Uh as I think most of you know, uh DCHA has established a voucher success fund using about seven million dollars in non-federal funds this past spring. Uh we already have some current activities active under that fund, including security deposit assistance. Uh we have brought on housing navigators and landlord liaisons and we are also currently actively developing and exploring additional activities like a damage mitigation fund, application fee assist uh assistance and maybe some uh other potential landlord engagement fees. Uh we uh wanted to anticipate these non-federal funds potentially being expended by the end of twenty twenty the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And so what we're proposing here is using our MTW flexibility to continue some of these uh selected activities as a new MTW initiative. As these um activities are rolled out and implemented, we wanna be assessing the data and the utilization um and use that information to potentially continue on some of these activities under our MTW flexibility. The second initiative that we're proposing is the Affordable Housing Preservation and Development Fund. Here, we wanna use our MTW flexibility to set aside MTW funds that will be used towards affordable housing development. Um activities under this initiative uh could include the preservation of our existing DCHA housing development of new potential affordable housing uh and or the acquisition of land or properties towards the purposes of affordable housing. Currently
Go ahead.
Oh, currently, DCHA, uh we are planning to use seventy million dollars in MTW funds under this activity towards the Internal Revenue Bond project, uh which will level uh you know, as everyone knows, will leverage an additional seven hundred million in funds to revitalize nineteen of DCHA's uh public housing properties. I have a question.
I think you answered it. Is there anything else other than the internal bond?
Uh not currently.
That you would put put this toward, but can you give an example of what you might uh could could do beyond this?
Yeah, I mean, in the future, if we wanted to step into, for example, an expiring tax credit property and use some of our funds to help redevelop that or maintain its
So there's a lot of flexibility.
It does have a lot of flexibility um as we've written it. That's intentional. But currently, the plan is to set aside those specific funds for the the bond revitalization project. Yeah. Um and then the final um initiative that we're proposing is the extension of RAD resident rights to Section eighteen projects. We wanna use our MTW regulatory authority here to extend those resident protections uh to households that would be impacted by uh conversions or dispositions under uh Section eighteen only. Um this would include things like the right to return, you know, no rescreening of current residents when they their property gets converted. Procedural rights, grievance rights. Um the full list is is in the MTW plan. And this initiative in particular, I think, is in response to feedback that we've received from residents and other stakeholders. It's also aligned with uh the board resolutions that have been passed um around, you know, those guiding principles about making sure that DCHA residents benefit from redevelopment activities. Any questions about the new proposed activities?
I just wanna, I think they're all excellent and I was really excited to see them in there. I think the voucher success fund in particular and the innovations there are really just I I what 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 I feel when I see these is of you guys having your finger on the pulse of what's happening and figuring out how to respond to them, which is just a great feeling. So thank you.
I just wanna echo that, especially given the feedback that we got about the different kinds of fees that people are seeing. Um especially upon moving, um you know, this is um this is very much something that's needed. Um and I recognize that this might be something that you can only extend to HCVP um uh voucher holders. Um but if there if you have any dollars that are available that you can also make available for the LRSP um uh clients that we are serving, uh I would be very grateful for that as well um as um those those clients are also reaching out to the ICH and to the Housing Authority explaining what they are navigating in terms of moving fees. And so um this is this is a critical um initiative.
I think we do have security deposits available for LRSP, is intense.
Sorry. And and sometimes it's not just a security, like some folks have encountered move in fees, so as long as it's flexible and can cover those things. That would be fantastic.
I'm not sure if it's that flexible, but I was just gonna say there's something, I think there is something, but but not, but but you're, you know, hear what you're saying.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh next slide, please. Um so now I'm gonna get into the proposed changes to uh three of our existing MTW initiatives. The first one being Initiative One, which is modifications to DCHA's project based voucher program. Uh we've had this activity in our MTW plan since, I think, two thousand and four. So it's a longstanding activity. Um we're making some changes this uh for this upcoming fiscal year partially due to us responding to some new HOTMA regulations that came out related to the PBB program and also uh you know, we took a look at our existing policies and found that there are some additional flexibilities that we could use that we just hadn't been um using previously. Um so the first change that we're proposing is that when allocating new project based vouchers to a property specifically owned directly or indirectly by DCHA we wanna waive the requirement uh to have a competitive process. We feel like it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to have a competitive process when we are awarding those vouchers to ourselves. Um the second change is uh related to rent reasonableness. So what we're proposing here is that DCHA will conduct rent reasonableness determinations at PBB projects owned uh directly or indirectly by us and will waive the uh standard requirement to use a third party instead. Uh this also puts us in line with how the rest of the voucher program is currently being run. We do our rent reasonableness determinations in-house. We have an outside software that we use, but we conduct so both the tenant side and then the project base voucher side will do those rent reasonableness determinations here at DCHA. And then the third one is around uh under HOTMA, uh there is a new requirement that if you uh are going to exceed fifty percent of your um voucher allocations uh it with PBB units that you would have to do an impact analysis. However, as an MTW agency uh we have had a longstanding authorization that we can exceed the PBB caps. Um and so we feel that this is a a sort of administrative hurdle duplicative uh based on the flexibilities and the uh waivers that we already have in place. Um and then finally, we wanna increase the HOT PBB contract term for fifteen, twenty years, from fifteen to twenty years. We wanna give those PBB units um a longer term affordability.
What is HOTMA?
Sorry, uh so HOTMA is the Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act. It was passed back in like twenty sixteen. Uh has been slowly rolling it out over the last decade. Um in the past two years, they put out a number of notices implementing like guidelines. Um and so they've been uh they released one related to PBB. They released uh some related to asset limits and income calculations. So when we were looking at our plan, we wanted to say what's come out under HOTMA recently and how does that sort of bump up against what we already have and our MTW flexibility. So there's a couple places in our plan where we reference HOTMA because we're doing things in reaction to what's in HOTMA.
Thank you.
Uh next slide. Um the second initiative uh that The second initiative that we already have that we're proposing changes to is Initiative Twelve, Rent Simplification and Collections. Again, a number of these are related to changes that are in HOTMA. The first thing we want to do is we want to increase the self-certification of asset limits from the current policy of fifteen thousand up to fifty thousand. We will also exclude assets under fifty thousand dollars from the rent calculation. So, you know, this is, residents will get to keep more of their assets. And it also reduces some of the administrative burden for staffing residents around, you know, verification. The second thing is around income reexaminations, and I know these policies are kind of deep in the weeds, but these are the sort of things, not as quite as exciting as the the new initiatives, but so we want to, under HOTMA, there's a new requirement that when you do an income reexamination, you look at a twelve twelve full months of income during that period. We want to keep DCHA's current policy in place where we use just a couple of pay stubs. This is partially because, one, we have the MTW flexibility to waive this, and we want to understand better how potentially adopting the full twelve months would impact residents, impact, you know, calculations and staff time. So because it's a newer policy that's coming in on HOTMA, we want to say, let's just use our MTW authority, at least for this year. Let's waive that, and then we can spend some time sort of evaluating whether that's a policy we want to adopt.
I'm sorry if I'm asking too many questions.
No, please.
So why, do you have, could you just talk, speak a minute about the impact on moving from the fifteen to the income guideline limit or or whatever? Will this exclude some people who are very low income or will this keep them in? I mean, I'm for mixing the incomes and, but I just am asking if this is going to have an effect on very, very, very low-income people.
I don't believe it would. This is also in reaction to a HOTMA change, so we have to adopt it anyway. We're just doing it a little prematurely. But no, I mean, there's no anticipated impact on those who are low.
I think we have to watch it, though. When you raise the income guidelines to another level, often that group gets more preference. And it's, you know, than the than folks who are really on the box.
So clear, just to clarify for this, this is for assets, so this is verifying their assets. So this is allowing, well, after fifty thousand dollars in assets, you can do a self-certification. So it shouldn't have any impact.
Okay, thank you.
And they would already be selected for our program, so this is just how we're calculating the income and the amount of rent that we're paying. It's not going to impact how we select families to to be part of. We don't know this information.
It encourages people to have assets, and that's great. Raise all of that. That's great, but just.
Um, the last two proposed changes that we're making under this initiative, we want to waive some of the HOTMA changes related to the student financial assistance definition. Under HOTMA, there were some new, they kind of divided student financial assistance into like two separate categories. And now there's extra verification involved. We want to use our MTW authority to waive that, streamline it, and just exclude all student financial assistance from income. And then the last one is around earned income for dependent students. Again, we want to exclude all income, earned income for dependent full-time students. This would just better streamline the right calculation, reduce the extra amount of verification needed for both residents and DCHA staff. Currently, our policy is that we calculate a deduction first and then earn income on top, so we're just streamlining that. Any questions, any additional questions about the changes proposed here?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not going to ask another question.
I do want to appreciate, Nicole, that some of the language that we were talking about, you've made the adjustments to so that it's much, much clearer in this presentation than.
Yeah, yes, yeah, what we have to put, yeah, like you said, Commissioner, in the plan is like a very specific terminology that isn't always clear to, you know, what we're actually doing. So I appreciated that feedback. The final thing that we're, just next slide. The final thing is, we're just closing out one of our existing initiatives. It was, we created a local form to support our biannual recertification process. Changes under HOTMA make it so that we no longer need a local version of that form. We're just going to adopt the standard form that all PHAs use now, so we're just proposing to close that initiative. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take questions about our plan, any of these proposed changes, or the initiatives that we're considering adopting.
So I don't, I don't have a question about the plan, but I would just ask, you take a minute, again, for the benefit of the general public, just explain MTW, so it's moving to work, what does that mean? And why do we have so-called initiatives under moving to work?
Yep, so moving to work or MTW is a program that was created by Congress in the late nineties. It's implemented through HUD, and there are a select number of housing authorities across the country who were selected to participate. We had to apply, we had to be a high performer. DCHA has been moving to work since the early two thousands. And what the program does is it gives us flexibility to sort of make local decisions and operate outside of the sort of traditional rules and regulations that govern some of these housing programs. We get to, you know, waive certain regulations, we get to use our funding a bit more flexibly. We get to do things like site-based waiting lists, we get to do things like recertifying income every two years or three years if you are elderly or disabled and, you know, on a fixed income. So there are a lot of benefits to residents, there are benefits to DCHA as far as our operations, and we get to also do things like with the Affordable Housing and Preservation Development Fund, use some of that MTW funding flexibility we get to invest back into our buildings, our programs, and potentially, you know, be a public developer and and look at new opportunities for affordable housing. So it is a unique program, only a hundred and thirty agencies across the country are out of over three thousand, so I think DCHA has a lot of opportunity to use the program to benefit our residents. And as part of the requirements of being MTW, we have to submit an annual plan that says what we're going to do with our program. At the end of the year, we prepare a report that says, here's what we did this year. And there's a number of sort of compliance goals that we have to meet as part of the program. So HUD takes a look at our operations and make sure that everything's above board and everything is is working correctly.
Thank you. So we have to submit the plan to HUD. Does HUD have to approve the plan?
Yes, so we cannot implement the activities in our plan until it is approved by the board, submitted to HUD, and then approved by HUD.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions?
I have a question for the director. I'm, I'm full of questions, so it's okay. Could we have later on, you know, when you get all this submitted and then you have the, do we have kind of a little update on the status of that program, kind of what the results have been? Down the, it doesn't have to be right away, but I think that would be, that's, that would be a great gift to us and to me, for sure. And I know that's where you're coming from. I know that you're. And that's mine as well, and I, I really, I know that. And I commend you and the staff for that as well, but if we could just have like a little reporting on what we're doing and kind of how we want to go, what the roadblocks are.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Nicole. Any other questions for Nicole on the Commissioners online? Any questions? Okay, I don't see any. So hearing none, the Chair will convene a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, which is to approve the twenty twenty-six Movement to Work Plan and submit to HUD.
So move. Second?
Second. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Wayman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Silla, any others, any other information from the Operations Committee?
No, just my gratitude for the executive team and the staff that are supporting that meeting. Really appreciative of the level of data that's being provided. We are tracking everything from the procurement pipeline, which is at the back of the book, all the way to Public Safety and Services, which is in the front of the book. I promise you, it does not go into day-to-day activities. It does stay at the strategic level. But it, this is, uh, thank you so much, Director, and your team. I really appreciate the opportunity to support and to do it in a way that's informed by the data, so thank you.
Commissioner, you can have whatever you want to.
You've been delivering on that promise, so.
We are data-driven.
I have one thing. I just want to tell you, I'm over there every day. I live there.
Over where?
On George Avenue.
Okay.
Northwest. And Park Morton is really beautiful. I've been there many years in that neighborhood, and I, I know the history, I know the. So I want to congratulate you on a beautiful project that you can't tell the difference in affordable housing and right to the neighborhood. And it is really beautiful. I haven't, I don't know about the internals, but it really does look beautiful, so congratulations on that.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Silla. So at this time, we're going to move on to the Resident Services Committee, Commissioner Blackson.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Chair, you may hear me speak many times about the block-by-block, and you may have hear some of the testimony on block-by-block meetings and what's occurred in those meetings. So usually, we're focused on residents under the Resident Service Committee. And we partner with DCHA Office of Resident Services, the Maintenance and Fleet Manager, Property Management and Operations, just different divisions under the Directorate Board to answer successfully the residents' concerns that are brought on by leadership. On June twenty-sixth, we had held a successful engagement and training session. We had the pleasure of having Commissioner Siller attend that session. We had got training on bylaws and different things from the Leadership Lawyer. We had passed out T-shirts for the block-by-block and did a soothing exercise after engaging in the engagement with DCHA Directorate Staff. It's just a great initiative where many things can happen during the block-by-block, times that you can reach leadership and the residents, so so they can successfully take things back to their community residence. And we received valuable feedback from over thirty-seven leaders on just how important this initiative is and how successful this initiative meets the leaders' expectation. We are scheduled for the next block-by-block on July seventeenth, and we'll have training like from Stop the Bleed, Department of Public Works on the recycling program with DCHA. And I'm just open to connecting with you and even taking recommendations or suggestions on reaching the residents and leadership. And you can contact me at two oh two two five zero four four five one. Commissioner Silla, if you want to share your experience, please feel free to do so. Thank you.
I would love to, Commissioner Blackson. I want to thank you for the work that you are doing to bridge our board with the resident councils and the leaders. It was beyond informative. It was a pleasure to meet Mr. Kenneth Council in person and to be able to build a relationship that extends beyond the virtual. There is such a divide and a distance between us here in this virtual space. So meeting in person was was really powerful. The reflections and the discussion, oh, also, 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 it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the DC Housing Authority team that was on site. There were multiple team members and multiple, I think divisions might be the right word, represented, responding to questions and concerns from the resident leaders. There were a couple of things that were uplifted or that caught my attention and that I think require us to be very creative and deliberate in terms of how we solve some of the problems that they are speaking towards. So one thing that caught my eye was around the question about income recertification and what's required, what's not required versus what the practice is. And it it's really important for us to be leaning into the Sigma Six Principles. I wish Commissioner Jones was here, because, you know, that that was something that she uplifted to my attention. We have to be sure that we are only requiring and only processing what's required to, in order, you know, like, just even listening to the answer as as a commissioner, someone who has incredible capabilities of navigating complex processes, it was hard for me to track. And if it was hard for me to track, like, you know, that is something that I think we really need to be thinking about and centering our work around. Are we processing things as simply as we can? Because if it's complicated for board members to understand, it's complicated for staff to implement, it's going to be impossible for our residents to navigate. Dogs is a tension that we need to resolve. But the tension of resolving dogs should not be just something that our property managers are burdened by. We need to be thinking about that in our design and how we are working with the property at large. We need dog parks, and I had no idea that our residents, you know, that this was something that might be so important to them. They are calling for us to designate spaces where their dogs can run free without interference with other residents that want to enjoy the space. We need to be thinking about how we embed that in the design of our properties as we're rebuilding, as we're renovating. I think, so the creativity with which we are listening to the feedback, I think, is something that I really want to press on the executive team. So think out of the box, because to me, as soon as I started hearing the feedback, I was like, I never thought our residents would need dog parks. I thought that was a thing, you know, that gentrified DC intro, right? I did not think that Chocolate City DC would really benefit from dog parks, but I'm a convert now after listening to that conversation. One, one last comment about the the block-by-block. The resident council leaders were excited for, to see other commissioners also taking advantage, also visiting. So to the extent that you have time, please go. I got feedback on the Rebuilding Communities Initiative, which I think, which I'll speak a little bit about after in Commissioner's time because that initiative, to me, is a joy. But one of our resident council leaders gave a really strong criticism that I think we need to accommodate and account for. She said, you have tables for all of these other things. We need a table for the executive team, and we need a table for the board. We need representatives that can be there, that can interface with residents, that can get feedback from residents. Commissioner Blackson has a survey that she hands out at every single one of her events so that she's getting feedback directly from people to understand what their barriers and challenges are. I think she's showing us the way and that we would greatly benefit from having Andre set up a table for some members of the executive team to be there to help people understand, you know, and and give us feedback. Similarly, the board needs a table, and I would urge us to consider, maybe we do it in shifts, but that as many of these rebuilding community events as possible, we are there to liaison, to hear directly from residents.
Thank you. Well, speaking of dog parks, so about creative, there was a building that was built, so Connecticut Avenue, I forgot, EY did it. And they had the dog park on the rooftop. Yeah, yeah, that was the first time I saw. Okay, Commissioner Blackson, are you, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and we do really appreciate the work that you're doing, and we get really good feedback in terms of the events that you that you put on and the, you know, the opportunities that the resident leaders are giving to come forward with. to um uh come forward with uh questions and and concerns. Uh and we will do whatever we can to uh as we move forward to uh address uh some of those issues and implement things like Dog Park and and some of our new developments. So um before moving on to the uh Budget Audit Committee, I'm going to ask um our Deputy uh Executive Director Nicole to talk about the uh Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen, which is to um provide another extension for our admin plan, our administrative.
And I'm a delegate. The General Counsel. Um so um as the Chair said, we are um we are coming back to the board to extend the Administrative Plan Regulations. Um again, for um what should be the final time is, as I think we've provided is updates in prior meetings. You know, we've been hard at work revising, I mean heavily revising our admin plan and A C O P. And so this is, this will, this is an extension of the existing regulations with no changes while we, you know, work, work through the process to um to to issue and finalize a new admin plan, which we'll come back to the board for approval.
So in in terms of timing, this this will be published?
This, these emergency rights. So they're effective upon approval by the board. Um I can't say when they would be published because because we go through the D C Office of Docs for that, but um but but they would be effective. Uh I believe they, the current regs expired tomorrow or maybe, maybe Friday. Um and so and so the, you know, this allows us to continue under the, the current regs.
Any questions? Hey, if there are any questions, uh can I get a uh motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen to authorize extension of the ninth emergency and proposed regulations for uh DCHA's administrative plan?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Uh any questions? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Did you hear me, Sheneta? Can you hear me?
I hear you now. You can repeat your, whether you agree.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh so then we'll go to the uh Budget Audit Committee. Uh is, did Commissioner read it? I don't see her name. Um okay, so I'm gonna advise you that could then to to give a report. All right. And I do have one resolution uh which which is to uh accept the final audit for F Y twenty twenty-two. Yes, thank you. Um so you all should have the report for the audit or the final audit for twenty twenty-four. As um you may be aware, back in February, uh we received the um financial statement audit that was required by um by the council that uh took place, that was um and then we received that audit. And in that audit, we received a disclaimer of opinion, and I know that we've gone through that. Um this audit is uh which required by HUD and it was required to be submitted by June thirtieth, uh which effectively is the single audit. And a single audit is both a financial statement audit as well as a compliance audit, which uh requires the auditors to both look at the financial information that's reported as well as compliance with programs. Uh because we'd already had a financial statement audit, uh we still had a disclaimer of opinion on the financial statement portion. Uh we received a, what's called a qualified opinion on the uh, on the, on the, on the programs. Um and so the programs that the auditors looked at were the uh Moving to Work and the voucher uh program. So those were the two programs that were audited. There were a number of findings that came out as a result of the audit. Many of those findings were uh really an extension of the findings that came out of the financial statement audit that was reported back in February. Uh but there were some additional findings that also came out of this audit related to some of the compliance with the programs. Um just as kind of additional information, um the uh the team, the uh the finance team has already begun uh looking at and working on our remediation of findings and have uh presented a pretty uh a significant plan on how to address the findings. So they are working on those issues and they looked at um every finding that was received as part of the audit and um and worked through a detailed plan on what they're going to address those issues. Uh so with that, um that is what we're asking today is that we accept the financial statements and the uh the audited financial statements that were performed. And one other thing, I think we talked about this um when, when the contract was first made, but uh the auditors for uh or the single audit were the same auditors that uh performed the audit earlier in February, um S B uh and company. Uh and and so uh it 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 was it was good to have them do the work because they had already gotten a great deal of experience of looking at the information and and looking at uh looking at our numbers, but also this was the firm that for uh the first part of the audit was hired by the uh by the O I G. So it gives a great level of comfort for. Any questions? Uh any of the commissioners online have any questions? Okay, then if there are no questions, um I'll ask for approval of Resolution or a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty, which is to accept the final financial statement audit of DCHA for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Oh, we have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh Commissioner Clay, anything else from the Audit Committee? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank uh all of the the committee chairs and members for the the work that they do. Uh you know, we have this monthly board meeting, but every week the board meetings, all of the various committees do meet, work people's staff uh and delve into some of the details of the the programs and what we're doing. And and you know, and that really allows us to move forward and to make some of the progress that we've got. So with that, uh the next agenda item is Commissioner's time. And I have one thing that I want to put on the floor. Um at the last month's meeting, we announced that Commissioner Melissa Lee uh hadn't resigned. Uh and she has moved on. And so I would put on the, I want to put on a record proclamation. And this can uh be noted as Proclamation twenty-five dash oh one. And it's to recognize and honor Melissa Lee for exemplary service to the District of Columbia Housing Authority. Uh and there are a number of whereas clauses, which I'm not going to read all of these to to simplify it. Uh Melissa came on the board in June of twenty twenty-two, I believe, and then beginning uh January of twenty twenty-three, she became a member of the Star Board and, you know, was specifically designated in that legislation. Uh so she served a total of about close to three years uh on the board. So again, we want to thank her for her service. And after all the whereas clauses, it is summed up by, now therefore, be it proclaimed that the DCHA Board of Commissioners, through adoption of this proclamation, is to sincerely thank and recognize Melissa Lee for her commitment to the service, to for her commitment to service to the District of Columbia Housing Authority to help create a better quality of life for all residents of DCHA properties. Okay, and it's signed by myself as Chair and Keith Pretto-Grood as Executive Director. Okay, so. We're gonna call on you last. First, anyone online that uh Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Blackson. Commissioner Burridge, just uh we haven't heard from her today. Uh okay, Commissioner Clay? Sure. Um I just want to uh I want to note something and make a request going forward. Um I think it was, I didn't see it till yesterday, but I think it was a little over a week until there was article on the paper. Um that was not, I don't think it was brought to the board's attention formally. Um and I just request that in the future, when there are settlements, that we be made aware about it before it becomes, especially before it becomes public information. I don't think it was um anything that would have required our approval or review, but just for us to to be made aware in advance.
Yeah, we did actually approve. We did approve this.
Okay.
But now your point about the article is.
I'm in the article, yeah.
Well, no, well, no, if if we approved, I didn't realize.
We did.
We did.
Okay. Then then I think I'm, I might have also missed that. We approved it.
There, there's, I mean, I think, I think there, there were some, there were some discussions in a, in in closed session about, about this because, because it was, it's a litigation matter. So, so, you know, we did have, we did have discussions about it, but
And I think it might be important to recognize, for example, that I do remember the discussions, but I hadn't realized that we were deciding. And so when we are doing deliberations, I think it might be important to um mark the point that we are moving from a discussion where we are expressing our viewpoints to like a decision that might be.
So, yeah, so the concern I had, again, is that um we did discuss it and we agreed forward, but uh I didn't know that it had, had in fact been settled.
Okay.
And, you know, we, you know, put a bow on it until the article came out. So that's, that's what we're talking about. You just need to make sure that you inform the board when something like that happens, you know, like you, you know, we, we did talk about it and we essentially approved it, but uh, you know, we didn't know that it had actually been settled. And I take responsibility for that. I, I thought the boat was tied up, but we got it now. Okay. Commissioner Murphy?
Um the only thing I was gonna say, just following up on the audit um resolution, is I that there are some things, there's good and bad and the ugly and the odd. Um and I don't, we don't, we don't, we're not shying away from that. I really appreciate that the, all of the staff responses were essentially, we agree with the finding and we know we got to fix it. So I really appreciated that approach. And um our conversations in the Audit Committee have been very constructive and the team has um said that right now they have the right consultant resources to help us make improvements and just want to reiterate our offer. Like, if if the team feels like it doesn't have the resources it needs, come to us because we don't want to keep ending up with audits that have these kinds of findings. I think we, I don't know if you mentioned this here, if you did, I missed it. I think we did close out seven of the findings from last year's.
Yes, I did not mention.
Okay, so I mean, we are making progress. So that's great news. And we know that this is not something we can solve overnight and that is taking all the right steps to solve it longer term. But um I just want to make sure the staff knows, like, don't feel like, don't be shy about asking the board for help because I'd rather that than keep having repeat.
Okay, um I will be fast. Um uh first and foremost, joining the Block by Block allowed me to return back to Sibley after I, I think about a year and a half from being there. Um my first impressions at Sibley then was that it was overran by rats and that the community space was to see the change at Sibley, to walk on the property, not a rat in sight and a community room that was um just welcoming and like beautiful was um a pleasure. So thank you so much for that. Thank you, Commissioner Blackson, again, for that opportunity. So just kudos to property management and the work that you are doing. Um rebuilding communities is a joy. Um and the ways in which that the activities are evolving also remind me that we need to be thinking about embedding the activities that Andre is innovating and and incorporating into the events, into the property and how we run, operate, design the property. And so um uh barbering and hair care, childcare, arts and crafts. Um um and then uh something that allows people uh entrepreneurship or or um to to do something for us, by us. Um whether it's a clothes swap or there, it just feels like that there are a lot of ways in which we need to learn from what's happening at rebuilding communities over that time block and to really integrate that into how we are designing, how we are administering um our, our properties. It's just amazing. So thank you so much to Andre and his team for everything that they are putting in there um uh in into that, that event. Um lastly, um my Consumer Engagement Work Group is fired up by all of the uh monies that are being devoted towards the Housing Authority and the bond's approval. Um they wanted to join the meeting and um uh testify about how important it is to have a homeless preference uh as part of the public housing and the um voucher uh waitlist process. Um but they are, they find it very difficult to navigate the website, to s- to understand how to sign up to testify. Um and so I wanted to uplift that. Um I think I sent uh Chair, Chair, Chair Skinner and um Director Keith kind of a uh um a summary of what we encountered as together. We tried to navigate the website um to uh do all of that. So uh we just need to beef up a little bit how we're communicating um and allowing for uh people to participate uh in our board meetings.
So I would, I would just like to, to, to echo uh that in, in terms of the website, because I the last couple of days had the opportunity to go on the website and just, just look at different things. And it, it definitely needs a lot of work. It's really very confusing, very difficult to, to navigate. But I, and I understand we're working on that. We, I'm not sure if we actually have a uh web consultant on board. Now that we're gonna be, that's something we're working.
And it's improved a lot since where it was.
But it still needs some work. Okay, thank you. Uh anything else from commissioners, commissioners online? Uh hearing none?
Yes. Yes, this is Commissioner Blackson. I'm, I'm not sure if you called me. I may have missed it. Um I wanted to share a little bit about uh community chat and chew I had with the residents in Southwest this past Monday.
It's a call.
Can you hear me?
Community chat. Community chat and chew. Okay, I didn't hear what you said. Okay.
Okay, um I had the pleasure of having four of the um DCHA property residents come down from the Southwest community and meeting Invision Center. And they had a time to share their concerns and um their compliments to DCHA. A few had compliments to DCHA and how they're doing and the new management team and um how they can relate to the things that they have experienced. So I also conducted a survey after that meeting. I'm always conducting a survey and the residents definitely appreciated the engagement. It was only for the Southwest quadrant residents, but just looking to do the other chat and choose with the other communities. I just wanted to keep you informed of this is what happened. And the residents are very appreciative of being able to some say vent or share those concerns. And we had over fifty residents participate. So just wanted to inform you that.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So um so the board will not meet in August. We are taking a little uh break. And I hope everyone has, you know, really wonderful summer, get a chance to go away and take some vacation. And the next board meeting uh will be held on Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five at one P M. Uh and again, it's going to be via Zoom. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting uh can be found at our website, W W W dot D C housing dot org. Uh and with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move?
Your second? With a second.
Second.
Second, okay. With that, uh, the meeting is adjourned at two forty-nine P M.